I'd like to call to order the January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four Miami Sburg City School Board meeting. The district mission is to foster a positive, nurturing, and safe environment to inspire and support ongoing learning and the development of individuals as productive members of society. We must be able to conduct our meetings in an orderly fashion. Our expectation at all board meetings is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. In the event anyone is disruptive and interferes with the meeting, they will be asked to leave. If they do not, we will request that law enforcement assist in the process. All right. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ampton?
Here.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gutter?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Dr. Blessing?
Present.
And Mr. Holman?
Here.
At this time, I'd like to introduce our student board representatives. First, we have our juniors Madison McGowan and then we have Ososa Oga Bor. And then our sophomores are Sophia Stocker and Andrew Prince. And our hope was to give our students at the high school an opportunity for student voice, intergenerational collaboration, and a chance to grow knowledge, skills, and confidence in order to partake and contribute in their community as future leaders. The process that we used to select the reps started with applications. They were interviewed. We collected recommendations from teachers, principals, and counselors. And their terms will last until they graduate if they would like to stay that long. We can be right in front of the camera. So next, we'll add him to the roll call. Yeah. Next. Item C would be to adopt the agenda, recommended action to adopt, approval of the adoption of the agenda for January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And then next, we have D, approval of minutes for a regular board meeting held on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the organizational board meeting held on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Any questions about that? And then E, approval of financial report dated December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Blavens?
Everything is still trending pretty close to the forecast. The expenditures are currently coming in a little bit less, but I assume after the premium updates and stuff in January, that that will all align closer.
Our medical premiums for health insurance. Yes, I just went up, was it what percent was that? It was pretty much.
It's a fixed dollar amount.
It's a fixed dollar amount, but it's also different this year because we have two different contribution amounts for classified and certificated.
And then next, we have our Student of the Month. We'll have Colin Lopez come on up from Jane Chance Elementary School. And Mr. Amsler will read all about Colin and write me.
Miami Sburg School's December District Student of the Month is Jane Chance Elementary School student Colin Lopez. Colin was nominated by his teachers, Ken Montgomery and Kelly Holliday. Mr. Montgomery and Ms. Holliday said Colin Lopez is being nominated as Student of the Month for December twenty-twenty-three at Jane Chance Elementary School. At Jane Chance, we practice the purposeful people traits, those being gratitude, kindness, and respect. Colin exemplifies these traits daily. Here are just a few of those examples. Colin strives to show kindness to those around him by assisting his fellow classmates, greeting various adults and peers every morning, and making extra effort to include all students in the academic and leisure activities. Colin also shows respect to, by all using his manners on a daily basis. He wakes in line patiently, as well as uses his hallway manners as he travels through Jane Chance Elementary. Colin shows respect to his classmates by listening to them as they share or engage in group discussion, helping a friend in need, and goes above and beyond by setting an example to others to follow. Colin not only does what is asked of him and follows the Jane Chance classroom expectations, but he is also a silent leader that goes beyond expectations. He comes to school ready to learn each and every day with a positive attitude and a mindset for Colin's growth. Colin's most impressive and mature trait is his ability to lead, set an example, and show consistently every day without expecting anything in return. His discipline to do the right thing when no one is watching makes him an easy nomination for Student of the Month. When Colin comes into a conversation, other teachers always praise him for his manners, his respect, and his willingness to learn and try new things in any classroom. No matter if his teacher, or sub, or any adult at Jane Chance Elementary, Colin treats everyone with respect, gratitude, and appreciation. He does so with a smile every day. Colin starts each day by making a plan for the day and comes to school prepared with his backpack folder and other school supplies ready for the day. Colin always starts his morning by quietly working on his morning work and almost never has to be reminded to put his belongings away. Gets his lunch count done or takes care of other jobs. Despite being a quieter student, Colin has been working on finding his voice. He actively listens to others, then shares his thoughts in a small group settings or with partners. He is also one of the most active participants in group discussions, sharing meaningful and detailed answers or opinions. Colin has many strengths to share in the classroom, such as a high reading level, a strong math student, and a talented writer with many ideas to share. But what sets Colin apart with other students is his character, his positivity, patience, thoughtfulness, and calm kindness he possesses to make others around him stronger in the classroom. We are excited to see how Colin grows and soars throughout the rest of the school year. His attitude for growth and love for learning will allow him to achieve anything he sets his mind to. Congratulations, Mr. Colin.
So we're going to present you with a Student of the Month medallion, and we got you your pride Miami Sburg T-shirt. How's that? So what's your favorite subject at school, Colin?
Math.
Math? So can you multiply, divide, fractions, percents? What's your favorite? Fractions? Excellent. Someone got into some of the other stuff, too. Do you like sports? What's your favorite sport? Basketball. Are you going to play ba- do you play basketball right now? Excellent. What position do you play? You play forward, guard?
I don't know.
You don't know? Do you like to shoot baskets, three pointers? Not yet? Okay, all right. Well, congratulations. Can I shake your hand? And can you tell me who you brought with you tonight? We're going to practice on the voice.
Mrs. Montgomery.
Mrs. Montgomery, okay? And who else is back there? Oh, who else?
Mrs. Holliday.
Okay.
And my brother.
Your brother, okay. What's his name?
Weekend.
Okay, and who else?
And my mom.
Well, thank you for bringing them along with you tonight. And thank you for coming so we could recognize you. Would you like to shake everybody's hand? We'll get a picture. Maybe Mom can come up and your brother can come up and your teacher. We'll get a picture. How's that sound? Congratulations. You guys want to come up? Mr. Holman's going to take your picture.
Congratulations.
Come to, we'll all go. Yep. That's right. Let you stay by your teacher's. We'll all squeeze in. That's right. He's not telling us when it was the picture time. He's smiling, right? Well, thank you. Thank you for sharing him with us and you all coming tonight. So it was very exciting to meet you. So we're looking forward to hearing from you again. I bet you'll do lots of exciting things. You're welcome. It's okay. He did great. That's fine. You better get there. I don't want you to be late. Have fun, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you both. Next on our recognition part of the agenda, talk about school board recognition month. All students of the Miami Sburg City School District benefit every day from the dedication and commitment to a quality education by our school board members. The hours and energies devoted to making this district a great place to learn do not go unnoticed. Mr. Toadvine, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can. I'm just old.
In sincere appreciation for exemplary leadership and service to public schools, these certificates are presented to Christopher Amsler, Corey Daffler, Nyla Gutter, Jason Mallory, and Ann Neese. And we would also like Dale Toadvine to come on up. We have a resolution of appreciation for you that Mr. Daffler is going to read. Come on up here. He's probably going to add a few things. You better watch out.
We have.
Steve will get a picture.
Whereas, the Miami Board of Education recognizes the importance of excellence in board leadership, and whereas Dale Toadvine has rendered sixteen years of service to the Miami Sburg City School District, commencing with his November two thousand seven election to the Miami Sburg Board of Education, and whereas, while an elected official, Mr. Toadvine dedicated himself to representing the entire educational community for exemplary leadership and service to public schools. And whereas, during his term of office, Dale Toadvine served on various committees, including liaison to the Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition and Student Achievement Liaison. And therefore be it resolved that Miami Sburg Board of Education and administration expressed their sincere appreciation to Dale Toadvine for his dedication and service to the youth, staff, and community of the Miami Sburg City Schools, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education. I'm going to have him too because he was my student.
I think we want to get a picture. And we could probably bring Jeannie up, too. She wants to be in the picture, right?
I told her we'll Photoshop her in.
I think we should make the student reps get a picture, too. What do you think, Dale?
There you go.
Yeah, they should come up, too. Come on. Everybody knows Mr. Toadvine, right? They said they all knew you yesterday. Yeah.
We all.
That's right. They weren't even allowed to qualify unless, unless, here, you guys stayed in here. So, yeah. Here's, Mr. Holman doesn't say, okay, ready. I probably blinked. Thank you, Mr. Toadvine. We very much appreciate your service. So, you know. Okay, oh, Mr. Toadvine has to say a few words, so I better sit down. Got to hear these.
First of all, I'd just like to say that thanks for you young ones for volunteering to come in here and spend your time helping the school board because really, that's what your job's going to be, is to help tell them what to do the right way, okay? It's always better to have collaboration. The more you have, the better things usually get done. So don't sit back and not talk, okay? Please, I find this to be one of the most valuable things that the school board could do, is to listen to our kids, okay? And you're speaking for a lot of people, you know, about, altogether, you're looking at, how many now? Over four thousand?
Just a little over five thousand.
Yeah, almost forty, I think it's forty-eight hundred and some odd kids, so that's a big job. Some of us, because of many peoples. Mr. Keith takes care of him in Montgomery County. Anyway, thanks for this. I appreciate it. It was a great sixteen years. The two newly elected individuals, good luck to you. I think, I can tell you this, and mean it earnestly, you're going to walk into the best administrative group that I've ever seen. I've been in Miami Sburg schools for over sixty-three years. And Dr. Blessing, not a pun on words, but you are the best. You really are. You're the best leader that I've been fortunate to work with. So, thank you all, okay? Thank you, Deborah.
Yeah, thanks to Mrs. Toadvine, too. We know our spouses endure a lot with us being on the board. That's for sure. And luckily, they're very supportive. All right, next we have recognition of National School Counseling Week. It is recommended that the Board recognize National School Counseling Week, school counseling, standards-based, student-focused, will be celebrated from February fifth through the ninth, two thousand twenty-four, to focus public attention on the unique contribution of professional school counselors within U.S., United States school systems. The Board of Education further recognizes that comprehensive development school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the Miami Sburg City Schools' educational I was just going to ask you, student board reps, would you want to give a shout out to any of the counselors that you've worked with?
Mr. Myers.
Great guy.
Yeah, he's awesome.
Did you say Mr. Myers?
Yeah.
Mrs. Reisner, she's really nice. I love her.
Can I recommend that you speak a little louder? I'm going to call you kid, student, sorry. Everybody up there is kidding me just about. Yeah, I am going to leave. My grandson wants us to come and play cards and eat dinner with him. He's cooking tonight. I've been able to do that.
And Prince, I know you. I can recognize you with the hair. And I'm so glad you're doing this.
Thank you.
I suffer, Prince. You have some stories for us, right? Yeah. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be careful.
God bless.
Next, we move on to board discussion. And we have Carl Keith here to talk about tax and property reappraisal. Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I have with me my chief deputy, Kate Evans, my chief deputy auditor, has joined me tonight. I guess the first thing I should say, though, is, what is it, Colin? Colin Lopez?
Yes.
He's a tough act to follow.
Yeah.
I've been, I've been in public administration for a long time. I've hired a lot of people during my career, and I oftentimes tell people that I'm in the human potential business, industry. And when people come to see me and bring their resumes to me and, you know, want to talk about, you know, their experience and their background, I often say, I wish I could see their elementary school report card. But I think that tells more about their character and their potential than anything else they've done. So someone want to make sure that Colin hangs on to that piece of paper that you read and that he shares that with whoever he, future job hunter, it's either in the job hunting business. Again, thank you for having me. As this county auditor, one of my primary responsibilities is to redetermine property values for taxing purposes. And in Ohio, we are required to do that once every six years on a comprehensive basis, and then midway through that six-year cycle, we're required to do a market update. So last year was, two thousand twenty-three was our market update year. Every county in Ohio has to do this, but we're not all on the same cycle. But this was our year to do this. We're on the same cycle with Green County and Preble County, but we're not on the same cycle with Warren County. So we all are required to do it, but we do it at different times. It's always, it can be a controversial and difficult process and raises a lot of questions and concerns. I'm assuming you've all received notices from, many property owners have received notices from my office now at this point. We originally sent notices out in August of what the tentative new values would be. And then we had informal reviews with property owners after that, where we met with them. Actually, we zoomed with them, and about five thousand, about five thousand informal, what we call informal reviews, to review the information that we provided to them, and then finalized values in December. So the notices you've gotten from us most recently are the final values, determination of value for this year. The, of course, it's all overseen by the Ohio Department of Taxation. They recommended last year that we raise property values in Montgomery County by residential values by thirty-seven percent and commercial values by thirteen percent. We ended up at residential values that we submitted thirty-four percent, so a little bit less than that, and twelve percent for commercial, and they did approve that. Now, what's driving that is the real estate market. The number of sales are record-setting numbers of sales that we've seen in recent years. The prices have been what we called off the charts, and that's true not only here in Montgomery County, but across Ohio and across the nation. The real estate market, I ran out of, I ran out of words to describe it. Hot, robust, off-the-charts, record-setting. It's just been incredible what's happened with the real estate market, and that's what drives property values. We are a market value state, so when we are determining values, we look at recent sales. We do it by neighborhoods, so we're not comparing sales that have occurred in Miami Sburg to sales that occurred in Dayton or Washington Township or Vandelia. We look at neighborhoods and what's gone on in the real estate market within your particular neighborhood and how that has compared to values as they were set three years ago. I think here in Miami Sburg and Miami Township, we were, we raised, the average increase in values is about thirty, I think thirty-three percent in Miami Sburg and thirty-seven percent in Miami Township. And again, this, it varies across the county. Perry Township was our highest at forty-eight percent. Jefferson Township was our lowest at seventeen percent. But even within those jurisdictions, it varies from neighborhood to neighborhood. Again, depending on what the market has been, what sales have occurred within that market. So we have, again, we've sent out notices of what the new values are. If you go on our website, mcreealestate.org, and look up your property, you can see not only the new value, but the tax rates have been, are applied, have been applied, and those are real, those are final, from what we see from the state. So you can see what that means in terms of your next, of your tax bill for this year. One of the things that we've tried to emphasize throughout the summer is that when we say values are up thirty-four percent on average, that means some are less, some are more, but on average up thirty-four percent, that doesn't mean you're going to see a thirty-four percent tax increase. I mean, it just doesn't work that way in Ohio. There are mechanisms in place that prevent that from happening. And different jurisdictions are affected by it differently because they're, here in Miami Sburg, you are at the twenty mil floor. And so when you're at the twenty mil floor, the state law says that no school district can, must be at the, at least twenty mils, must be taxed for education purpose, for public education. So no school district can fall below the twenty mil floor. Miami Sburg's at the twenty mil floor this year, has been for some time now, I think. Valley View Schools got to the twenty mil floor this year. Dixie.
They're close.
Dixie got close to the twenty mil floor. So, you know, that affects tax bills differently than, than other jurisdictions. I've told people all summer long, you know, your value can go up and your taxes go down. Because I know, you know, with all of this, what really matters to people, what's it means in terms of my tax bill. Your value can go up and your taxes can go down. People look at me and say, well, I'm crazy, you know, that doesn't work that way. But it does. And I think that the last time we've looked, preliminary looked, forty thousand property owners in Montgomery County will actually see a tax decrease as a result of this year's increase in value. So there's a lot of, it always creates a lot of confusion, a lot of criticism sometimes, complaints. But we do have a process. If you don't agree with your value, there is a process where people can appeal, and we are in that appeal period now between January one and March thirty-first. This year, it's April first, since March thirty-first is on a Sunday, but this year, between January first and April first, you can file an appeal with the county's board revision if you'd like, if you think your, if your opinion of value is different than ours, you can file an appeal and you'll be, have a hearing with the county's board revision where you can present evidence why you believe the value should be something different than what we've, what we've set it for. And we encourage people to take advantage of that. We will be doing some workshops later this, in March, I think March primarily, we'll be doing some workshops to help people, if they want to file an appeal with us, we welcome people to do that. I'm happy to take questions if you'd like to do that. And I'm happy not to take questions if you'd like to do that. I was at Valley View School Board two nights ago, and I didn't get a single question, so I'm happy to take questions or not.
Carl, what did you say that website was?
There's other ways to get there, but that's the easiest, I think. And you can search for your property either by name, address, or parcel number. Actually, one of the, one of the features on our, on our website this year that we've added is you look up your, your property and you can go, there's a, there's a link there that's called the neighborhood.
Viewer.
Neighborhood viewer. And you click on that neighborhood viewer, and it brings up a map, will show where your property, the neighborhood that your property has been assigned in our mapping system, and it will show you every sale that has occurred over the past three years in that neighborhood, every sale that's occurred and what they sold for. I think it's really helpful for people to see for comparison purposes. Yes, ma'am? Is it all right if I take a question?
Yeah. Sorry. So I've always been told that the number that you give us is usually about thirty percent less than the actual value of the home. Is that, is that true, or?
Not necessarily.
Because I was wondering, because I'm like, well, that thirty percent, that the rise is probably making me about where the value of my house actually is.
That's not necessarily true. What we, we're always tailing the market. The values that you're seeing now are based upon sales that occurred in two thousand twenty-two. So, and it's, the lean date is January one, two thousand twenty-three. So we're always tailing the market. We're already a year behind the market. And when you're in a market like we currently are, where prices are growing at a very rapid pace, you get behind on the market very fa- very fast. So that's one thing to keep in mind. We try to be at ninety percent. We try to, our target is to be at ninety percent. Sometimes we're high on that, sometimes we're low on that, but our target is to try to be at ninety percent. If that helps.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
When was the last time property values were adjusted in Montgomery County?
Three years ago.
And is it typically on three-year cycles? What demands that action to happen?
Okay, so state law requires us to do this. We do a comprehensive revaluation by state law. Every county does this every six years. And then midway through that process, we're required to do a market update. So in two thousand twenty is when we did the revow, what we call a revaluation. So that in two thousand twenty-three is when we did what we call a triennial update, a market update. So basically, we are updating property values every county in the state. Every county in the state is updating property values every three years. And that's dictated by state law.
I was just going to say the appeal process works.
The appeal process works? Okay, good, good.
Yeah, I did it. It was easy, too.
We try to make it as easy as possible. Keep in mind that we are doing this as a mass appraisal methodology. We're following appraisal standards. So, you know, we have not been in inside anybody's house. Very few people invite us in their homes. But we do, some people do. And so, but that's what the appeal process is for. There are some specific issues that, that the property owner believes we should know. And before we make this determination, that's why we encourage people to let us know that. Because we, we don't know, all we, all we know is what we can see from the outside and what we can see from the public record. Every building permit, when there's any, any kind of change, we get every building permit and review all of those for new construction. But other than that, we don't know what's going on in the inside of the home. Unless now we do have neighbors that report on each other. Sometimes neighbors say, well, I haven't done anything to my property, but the guys across the street, you know, they, they finished their basement or something.
Without a permit.
And you'd be amazed the number of people that change things without a permit.
Trust me, that happens a lot.
Again, thank you very much for the opportunity. I appreciate the, I appreciate hearing about the, the students here tonight and how impressive that is. And so thank you for doing that and recognizing. Thank these students here representing you on the board, you know, who knows some days you might be a county auditor. I never dreamed I would be. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming. Next, we'll go to item H. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve meeting opening items C through G. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve meeting opening items C, Charlie through G.
Second.
So first by Christopher Amslar and a second by Mrs. Gettler. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Bowery?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Angler?
Yes.
All right, next we'll go to the consent agenda. And for item A, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight extended student trips. Seth Ravetta Sharp, Miami'sburg High School Winter Guard International Regional. Robin, in Avon, Indiana. Oh, all these kids go. Robin Wells, Sierra Bennett, Carrie Schleff, Heather Graham, and Gina Orwood, Orwick. And then we have Carly Bowling, Kelly Bush, Mandy Meiser for them. Miami'sburg Middle School Cheerleading State Competition in Canton, Ohio. And Jared Lovins for the Miami'sburg High School A P E S N A P Biology. Next, we go to, and then Samantha Uplith, Ohio State Stone Labs, South Bass Island. Item B, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve out-of-state travel. Basically, these are the same students.
They're going overnight and out of state. Those group, they're not students, these are their sponsors or their coaches. We don't list the students' names, just their sponsors or coaches.
That's true, okay, I wasn't familiar with some of this. So it's, it's the same group of coaches. So I don't really need to repeat all that, do I? I think it's just the same group.
Yeah, that was perfect.
Okay. And then item C, the Superintendent and Treasurer CFO recommend that the Board of Education approve the attached memorandum of understanding with the Teamsters Union number of 957. Mr. Humming, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so there are two, two M U's on there. One of them is, we look at it on an individual basis. We have a bus driver that resigned from us. She came to us driving after she retired from several, and she has some sick days that she's accumulated here. And she's very graciously been willing to donate them to Sick Leaf Bank. And so the Sick Leaf Bank, both unions have them. And those are days that members donate for their membership that might have some, it's classified as catastrophic needs when they run out of sick days, to help them get through until they're able to kind of accumulate more sick days on their own. So it's, it's very kind of the people to do that. And during negotiations, we certainly would look, if members would want to do that, then we would. And look at those on an individual basis, so. And there are some members that have been very gracious that they might say, well, I'm going to, because your severance is based on your sick days. So some of them will say, hey, I'll, I'll, I'll take X amount of days for my severance, but then I want to donate the rest in line instead of getting money for it, so.
So the sick time functions as part of the severance if they don't donate it?
Yeah, when they go to retire, yes. And then the second one is, one of the things that we wanted to do, we're responsible for transporting homeless and foster students. And so a lot of times it's, it's very fluctuates of who's out there. And it's very helpful to the drivers to have the same driver being consistent with transporting them, especially when they're going to other cities and getting to know is a grandparent or them going to be picking them up or a sitter. And so we wanted to amend the contract that if a driver picks up additional time for foster homeless and it would go over 30 minutes, that we're not going to rebid the route out. We all agree, especially students who have to transport. In those situations, it's better for them to have a constant person, adult with them. And so we're all in agreement on that as well, so.
Do they, where are my, so that's obviously a student that was here in Mariner that may have a foster parent that is somewhere else. Do we take a bus or a van there?
It depends most of the time, they're buses. We put them on like at, and some at the ends of the routes. And so, for example, if we have maybe a group of students that are in Dayton and they're right next to, and we have some students that might be Inglewood as well, they would meet at some location at the end of whatever school they're at. And they would go on one bus, and then that bus would go to one location and then another location. Sometimes we have them go north of town, sometimes they go south of town, depending on when they come in.
Right, next we'll go to item D. Michael Black, Principal of Miami'sburg High School, has recommended Emilia Salas, Hunter Todd, and Gracie Tyree for early graduation pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. It's pretty standard.
Yes.
And then item E, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Miami'sburg High School's program, program of studies and fee structure for the 2024-25 school year.
And if you want to, if you want to open that, Steve, just so if anybody has any questions, has had a chance to review it. I know Mrs. Moore, our secondary curriculum director, sent everybody kind of a cover sheet of the changes and additions that she had for this year, based on the high school and the committee that works on that. And I know that our student reps have had the chance to review it as well. So if anyone has any questions and if our students have any comments about some of the new courses we're offering or any deletions, happy to entertain that at this time.
I'd like to say I thought the report was very well done. All the changes were nicely noted and it was very easy to track. And I appreciated the effort that went into it.
It was very detailed. Andrew, did you want to say anything about how, what the criminal justice class came about?
I think the two new introductions to the social studies department is a really nice touch, especially the introduction of criminal justice. Because, you know, that's not a class that's ever been offered. So it allows students to get information and learn for a whole new subject. And in fact, at this high school, some of the history department teachers sent out a questionnaire about what class they think would be best. And I know from fellow students and when I saw that introduction to criminal justice was the top choice.
Okay.
So I think that'll be awesome for next year.
Yeah, that's right.
Can you take that as a sophomore?
It says junior.
Okay. The reason I asked is I know they offer that at CTC. And so I was thinking if a person could take it as a sophomore, it might give them some ideas as something I might want to pursue at CTC. But, you know, there must be pre-rex maybe for that. But that's, that's an idea. Does any other student board reps have any comments? Next we go to item M. It is recommended by the Superintendent to enter into an agreement with Miami Valley Career Technology Center to implement a well-coordinated career technical education to create and operate a Career Connections PLTW STEM Middle School Satellite Program with Miami'sburg City Schools.
So this is another exciting program with our partnership with the MBCTC. Last year, we added the Satellite Agricultural Program to the high school. And the year before, we added a STEM Robotics Program at the high school. And what this means is, is our Career Center, which is the Miami Valley CTC, provides us staff. So at no cost. So our treasurer loves that because we receive full-time staff members, certificate, certificated, that actually are Miami Valley CTC staff, but they work in the high school every day and become part of our staff. But they're financially the Miami Valley CTC. So this year, we get to expand to the middle school. So they're going to be offering a eighth-grade careers course. So that'll add to another elective that our eighth graders can choose, a career course. Right now, in eighth grade, there's also a STEM class. But next year, we could have a seventh-grade STEM class. So students could, if they really do like that STEM pathway, could have two years of Project Lead the Way in middle school and then continue at our high school with the high school program of the robotics that we currently have in place. So they are offering potentially two additional staff members on their cost. Our current STEM teacher that we have right now is paid by the district, but they are willing to negotiate that if that staff member would want to become their staff member, they will pay for that as well. So it's a fantastic opportunity. And so I know the middle school is still working on different schedule opportunities, but it's nice for our students have choice, right? When you're doing your schedule to pick electives and maybe some students are more art-focused or music or band or choir, but they, this is an opportunity in, you know, more of a technical and technology field. And then the careers, just helping students make choices if they want to go to the CTC. This gives, they have a great career exploration program. They currently use these programs at Huber Heights and Northmont. And I said, if you ever wanted to pilot a elementary satellite CTC program, we would be all about that. So maybe we'll soon have, you know, CTC classes in all of our levels. And they're, they're a great partner. They come, I've been in the ag department and they're, they're superv, they actually evaluate the teachers and supervise them, but they work really well with our curriculum department and the high school. So it's been a great partnership. And I know Joe would be so excited, Joey Zachovich, our former CTC board rep to hear that we're continuing to expand because I know that's, that was his passion as well. They've just been a great partnership, so.
Thank you.
How is CTC funded?
Through the state.
Through the state?
Yes.
So that's not through local tax dollars?
They have their own levies.
It's like a separate school?
Yeah, I mean, and they have a levy that will, I mean, I think they were on our local levy ballot a couple of years ago. So any of the school districts that they pull students from, they, they will have small levies in, in comparison because they have 16 school districts that they work with. And they get state funding for career ed, so, yeah.
It's just a great opportunity to give kids opportunities, to give them what they can do down the road. You know, just the earlier they get out there and be able to understand it. And they're, being in meetings with them, I mean, they, they provide.
The equipment.
Equipment and everything.
Curriculum.
That robotics class, man. So then we work with them, a lot of times we work with them if we got to, you know, run the electricity or do something different. But they are, they are sort of the, with our kids and opportunities. And no one bite us to stop to do it, so. It's catching on more and more kids or, or, you know, telling the others, like, you got to check this out.
The electors are all.
But I say, good for, good for us.
Do you guys know, do anyone take any of our robotics or any of the animal science this year? Anyone, you know, take those classes? Okay, well, we'll have to, if you find out, let us know.
All right, next we have item G. It is recommended by the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Whereas Miami'sburg City School District, District IRN number 44396 of 540 East Park Avenue, Montgomery County, Ohio, has satisfied all the requirements for membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association, a voluntary, unincorporated, not-for-profit. And whereas the Board of Education, Governing Board, and its administration desire for the schools with one or more grades at the seventh through 12th grade level under their jurisdiction to be voluntary members of the OHSAA, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education Governing Body that Miami'sburg Middle School and Miami'sburg High School do hereby voluntarily renew membership in the OHSAA and that in doing so, the Constitution, Bylaws, Regulations, and Business Rules of the Ohio High School Athletic Association are hereby adopted by this Board as and for its own minimum requirements as it pertains to, but not limited to student eligibility, coaching requirements, and administrative responsibility. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the Board reserves the right to raise the minimum standards, standards as it deems appropriate for the schools and students under its jurisdiction and, be it further resolved, that the schools under this Board's jurisdiction agree to conduct their athletics programs, athletics programs in accordance with the Constitution, Bylaws, Regulations, Business Rules, Interpretations, and Decisions of the Ohio High School Athletic Association and cooperate fully and timely with the Executive Director's Office of the OHSAA in all matters related to the interscholastic athletic programs of the schools. Furthermore, the schools under this Board's jurisdiction shall be the primary enforcers of OHSAA, Constitution, Bylaws, Regulations, Business Rules, and Interpretations and rulings rendered by the Executive Director's Office. The administrative heads of these schools understand that failure to discharge the duty of primary enforcement may result in fines, removal from tournaments, suspension from membership, and/or such penalties as prescribed in Bylaw 11. Executive content, OHSAA will be charging fees for participation to each school district at $50 per high school sport. No membership dues for seventh and eighth grade sports.
This is just, they ask us to do this every year as part of our membership.
Next we go to H. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve consent items A through G. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of consent items A through G.
Second.
So first by Mr. Dapler and a second by Mrs. Gettler. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Bowery?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Angler?
Yes.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
And next we move on to human resource, human resources agenda items. We'll start with A. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Miami'sburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to submitting to and passing a VCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with Ohio Revice Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. And then item B. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report, certificated, classified, supplemental, and stipend. And then we have the same conditions. And then item C. It is recommended that, that the Board of Education approve human resource items A and B. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of human resource items A and B.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so first by Mr. Dapler, second by Mr. Angler. And then roll call.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Angler?
Yes.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
And next we'll go to agreements and contracts. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following agreements and contracts as presented. Bradley Payne, Miami Valley Child Development Centers, and Senior Assistance.
Sure. I don't know, um, if, I don't really want to talk about Bradley Payne.
Bradley Payne, so.
Okay.
Um, Bradley Payne, if you remember, Dan Shaw came in and presented not too long ago. Dan works on, uh, capital planning with us. So in addition to that service, they provide a tax incentive, um, where they take a look at the district and any of the TIFs that we have and then help us kind of work through those. So this is updating that contract so that we have those services, capital planning services. And then we also get Dan Shaw to call all of us. Good way to go. And then they, they will also, um, once I've got an opportunity to go through the TIF stuff with them, they put together, similar to what they do with capital planning, that presentation. And then either Dan will present that or present.
When you say TIF, what do you mean?
Uh, tax incremental financing, I think.
All of your acronyms.
Yeah. Where a property doesn't get taxed on, um, like the additional building gets deferred so that they can save a little bit of money, like upfront, and use that to then, uh, maybe put in electricity or water.
And then our Miami Valley Child Development, um, contract. This is with Head Start, so our program at, um, Mother View. We, uh, work with them and any students that, because we have a partnership with Head Start teachers and Maymouthburg City School staff, that there is a part of the funding when our teachers educate a Head Start student, we get funding for them. And so they have to create a contract where we get some of those Head Start federal funds. Um, because we have, our employees are actually educating a portion of those students. And then some of those funds stay with them. Um, and then there's of course fees for the food service that the students receive for breakfast and lunch and snacks and, and things like that. So it's the same contract we had last year. It just takes a while to get all of the, the different levels of financing and who's, not financing, but funding, who's educating which ch- children. And that kind of follow the, the child funding, so. It's a, it's a great partnership. And then we also received the state funding as well this year that we didn't receive last year, so. And then the last one is a senior assistance contract, and that's for, um, a student who needs special transportation, um, that is to an off-site, um, educational set, service area, um, or St. Rita's School for the Deaf, a specialized school. Any questions?
Also, we live with, uh, at a district. Michelle's actually doing some more interviews now for some van and bus driver. So then I see about these contracts, this once you give a thirty, you get notice, then you can opt out of the contract and we can transport ourselves, so.
How many bus drivers do we have?
Not enough.
There were eleven.
Correcting it.
I mean, that's a huge number.
Yeah. Yeah, we run, actually I should give you guys an updated one. We... How am I saying? Sixty-some.
Sixty routes or sixty drivers?
About sixty drivers.
Okay. And we need how many?
Well, we can always, because we have routes that aren't covered now that are actually split out on a daily basis. So as we get new drivers hired and the ones that we split out come back together.
How do we credit track that?
Benefits, um, you know, one of the things that, um, we discussed in negotiations was the healthcare benefits was, is, is huge, um, in terms of that. So like when we were kind of talking about, um, earlier in the meeting about the, um,
Medical premiums.
Medical premiums and all that. So for us, it's going to be, in the first year after you change some defined contribution. So your, um, bargaining unit of your teachers and your administrative there's a set dollar, defined contribution the Board gives to pay for the medical insurance. And so this year, um, with the teacher's bargaining unit, we negotiated, we did some phasing in eighty-five fifteen in terms of that. And that has helped, that has really helped actually, actually retain some of our employees. Because what happens is, it was all kind of wobbler jawed over the years going back. Um, you had people that were grandfathered on a plan like the teachers had. And then you had people that weren't grandfathered where, based on the number of hours they worked per week, determined a percentage of, um, dollars the district would give for their defined dollar contribution. And so what we just, what we discovered, um, over the years was we, we did have some employees that, they would only work for insurance. And even when they did work for the insurance, they actually had a chaos to, to make the rest of the insurance. So that was one of the things that probably the last three, four negotiations we've really tried to work on and it, it's made huge. And so the new premiums started in January and already a lot of people were like, oh my gosh, this is so much better. So it, it's benefits, just like in, in every business, you know, people looked up. Because the, your medical's just, how many hours a week does a typical bus driver work? Uh, our smallest amount of hours are five and a half. But they go, but they always go up to eight.
Oh, five and a half?
Per day.
Per day.
Per day.
To eight per day.
Okay. But we have a lot more drivers that, even, even though they're contracted five point five, they're driving more than that because we have routes that are split out and, and all that, so.
Steve, if I can also add the clinic option that you guys approved at the last month meeting, we hope will also help attract more people to.
Yeah.
Sorry, I need to speak out.
You know, the ketting that, yeah, what Carol's talking about last month. We're hoping that's going to be a selling point as we get additional employees in that, um, struck throat, the cough, the bronchitis, the, the gunk everyone has going on where you can't get to the doctor, you can't get to the nurse practitioner, that thing with ketting in Springbrough where we'll have set appointments each day. They're actually able, able to go there and not get a bill for that. Um, so we really hope that will be a driving force to attract.
And that's not just for them, that's for their families.
That's for their families too.
Correct.
And so we've been very fortunate to kind of run that pilot with, with ketting in the area being one of their first ones, um, this end of the town, so. So we're really hoping that all those things will be attractions to people to come.
Incentivize.
Incentivize.
Not only attract, but retain.
Yes. But benefits are huge, so.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the, I'll move for the approval of agreements and contracts. Second.
So first by Mr. Angler, second by Mr. Dapler. And then roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Angler?
Yes.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Okay, next we go to financial agenda items. And item A. The treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following transfers. These transfers are for school fees waived during September, December, September through December two thousand twenty-three. All transfers are made in accordance with Ohio Revice Code five-seven-zero-five-one-four. So, um, all of them are from, are from the fund, General Fund zero-zero-one. Uniform school supplies for Bauer, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The same supplies for Bear, two thousand three hundred and forty. Uniform supplies for Kinder, three thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. For Jane Chance, two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Mark Twain, two thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. Mound, one thousand nine hundred and fifty. Medler, one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five. Maymouthburg Middle School, ten thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars. The high school, twenty-three thousand two hundred and six dollars. And then we have class fees at the high school. And the amounts of a hundred and two dollars, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, a hundred and forty-four, and then a hundred and eighty-two dollars for a total of fifty-two thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Are these just being moved from the general fund to their specific cost centers so that they can spend them? Spend the funds?
Well, it's already encumbered. These are some fees and things that have been, and so.
Okay.
Money to cover that.
And then item B. The treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the closing of the district's account with fifth third securities.
So I communicated with you guys about moving the investment funds over Red Tree. And so as a part of that, um, we have to have board approval in order to close out the account, so.
All right, item C. It is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports.
So, and I spoke to you all about this several times. Mr. Mallory, given that you're newer to the board, um, certificate of estimated resources goes out to the auditor and they approve that these are the funds that the school is going to have available to spend. And then the appropriations are the actual, that, those amounts that are budgeted. And so, um, they have to be board approved because the budget belongs to the board. And then once I get that information back, I'll also give the, uh, four-twelve certificate, which is just, so Ohio Revice Code five or something, something, four-twelve. And that gets signed off on just to show that we have the available funds to spend and that we have it budgeted more than what we have.
I was trying to work myself up to speed on the financial report in December since I wasn't a part of that. And I read that and noticed a positive revision where you forecasted almost a million dollar surplus for this year that we weren't forecasting before, is that correct?
So what that's looking at and what you were seeing was, um, it takes into account cash flow. So currently how things are moving compared to what was forecast in November before we kind of got the update that Carl was giving us that we now have the tax rates. And so since those have been plugged in, what we're seeing come in in revenue could shake out to be, uh, about, I think, as of the month, it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more than what was projected. And so overall, we're saying if it continues that way, that by the end of the year.
We're basically right around zero.
Yeah, a hundred and thirty thousand is enough, that's what I was going to say. It's point zero one percent, one five percent of the forecast. And then the variance that we're looking at, um, because expenditures are currently coming in lower because those new premiums haven't, we'll see those in January because they just took effect in January. So when I do the January report at the February meeting, we'll see the expenditures are going to look larger than what they do currently because the new insurance rates aren't accounted for yet.
On the for, on the forecast, and just since we're in the, uh, financial agenda items, um, on the forecast and the annual deficits for twenty-five and twenty-six, what do those look like? I mean, what, what are, what is there a shortfall that needs to be navigated?
I don't have it in front of me, but on the forecast we submitted, um, it shows what the cash balance is or what the deficit spending is in twenty-five, twenty-six. I can find that for you, I just don't have it right here.
Well, the, the specifics of it aren't as important to me as, as basically, I just wanted to understand. Obviously, there'll be, need to be some strategies employed to solve those issues. And I just want to understand how those strategies get implemented, by who, and how the board would be involved in that.
So from my standpoint, I would just be providing the data and the numbers to you all. And then if I understand correctly, it would be Laura and the board looking at how it works. So I understand that correctly, I mean, I think that.
Typically, how far in front of stuff like that is a board? I mean, if, if there's a forecasted shortfall, a year downrange, where does that start to be addressed typically?
In, in, in terms of personnel, because your personnel, your, your personnel benefits, salaries, those are always your biggest part of, um, your operating costs. And so really what our strategy is every time, this time of the year when we're looking at, um, class sizes, looking at, um, who's retiring, resignations. So really every position that we look at, we look at to see, does this position need to be?
Right, we evaluate first.
We evaluate and, and to see if it could be, i- is it an absolute necess- necessity to be able to fulfill that position within the area? So for example, if there are certain numbers at a grade level that, as bubbles go through and that bubble's now completed its, its course through, we may not need X amount of positions in terms of that. And so another strategy that we look at too are like the MBCTC positions in terms of that. Um, so when you look at, we already have two now and adding, um, two more. So we would take a look at in terms of, of staff that's retiring, knowing that we're going to get two additional from the CTC and not being able to replace.
Knowing annual cost.
Uh, knowing annual cost.
Right.
So then.
And that compounds over a five-year forecast.
Right, right, right.
And so, um, Justin and I will work together as we get closer here saying, okay, these are, these are my retirees that are going out, their whole package was X amount of money. My new ones coming in are this amount of money total. And what I always do is I always assume, like, for teachers, I just, I don't always say step zero because sometimes you can't find someone. I always use an average of five years' experience when I, um, help Justin forecast for that. And then I also, um, I assume that every person we hire is a family health insurance person, which is a higher rate. So that way, I'm, I don't want to say I'm overestimating.
Worst case scenario.
Worst case scenario.
Sure.
And, and I like to be more conservative because some, they'll balance out somewhere along the line. That's kind of how I do it. And then I always feel like, okay, it's compounded here and then it compounds again that year. So I do have like a little running tally sheet that we kind of keep track of what that is in, in terms of that. But it, it's answer your question, long story short. From my perspective, we look at every, every time someone, um, retires, resigns, that. And really your, your, um, your certificated staff are the ones that, where you, that's, that's really where a lot of cost savings is.
Sure.
Trying to keep up with the moving target of the state.
Right, right, yes.
Because with the property values going up.
The ongoing moving target.
With the property values going up, does our income go up too?
So it does. And I noted on the forecast presentation that I mentioned to you all that, um, for us, it's going to be, I think it's estimated at around five million dollars.
Could we earmark an additional thirty percent for Terrace House?
No.
That's right.
I'm sorry. I thought she was going to peel that and go higher. Kenny, thanks, appreciate it.
So we'll go to item D. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve financial agenda items A through C. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve financial agenda items A through C.
Second.
Okay, so first by Mr. Mallory, second by Mrs. Gettler. And then roll call, please.
Mr. Angler?
Yes.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
And then next we have our acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's zero-one-eight account unless. Hold that, or it's cut off, okay. Indicate, no, there, just indicated otherwise. Indicate, no, there, just indicated otherwise. Books and materials valued at two thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars from the Bauer Elementary School PTA to the Bauer Elementary School Library. Books and materials valued at eight hundred and eighty-six dollars from the Bear Elementary School PTO to the Bear Elementary School Library. A hundred dollars from Kathleen and James Casper to Mark Twain Elementary School for Student Activities. One thousand dollars from the Ohio State Eagles Erie Number Two Three Oh Six to the Miami'sburg High School Soccer Program. One thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars from South Suburban Coalition United for Alcohol and Drug-Free Youth to Miami'sburg High School. One thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars from the Viking Booster Association in memory of Jennifer Templin. Do you have a motion?
I move to accept donations.
Second.
Okay, so first by Mr. Dapler, the second by Mrs. Geder. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Geder?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
All right. The next, the next we'll go to our reports, and I think Dr. Bunting is going to read the MBCTC news from Molly Williams. She left for a vacation today, I believe.
Yes, she has a report from December and January. Happy New Year, I am very excited to be representing Miami'sburg on the MBCTC board. We had a family trip planned for Florida to visit our son before taking this position. She apologizes for missing the first meeting, but promises to be here in person in the future. So in December, on Jan, uh, December twelfth, there was a Christmas dinner and board meeting. She was fortunate to be invited to the board Christmas dinner, to have an opportunity to meet many board members in an informal setting, and was delighted to receive holiday cookies baked by the students. They were both impressive and delicious. The meeting started promptly at seven, I was sworn in, and gave a short introduction about myself. Agenda items were approval of the school calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five, approval of several retirements and a new, and new hires, review and approval of the treasurer's report in minutes, a review of sophomore career days, three thousand, four hundred attending students with seven hundred and seventy-four applications for enrollment, and the first twenty-four hours of the online application process. This is an increase of one hundred and seventy students from the previous year. And the Miami Valley CTC FFA chapter hosted a charity auction for the Ronald McDonald House on December eighth. They raised eleven thousand, three hundred dollars. This is definitely an event I plan on attending next year. The National Trail FFA students are traveling to the governor's mansion to be presented with an award by Governor Warren. Adult education enrollment is down, so full-time classes will not be offered in January or March. Part-time classes and customized, customized training are being offered. And the meeting was adjourned, she didn't say that. And then, January ninth was her orientation and board meeting. I met with Dr. Weldy and Mr. Brad McKee, treasurer, for a short PowerPoint presentation about the MBCTC, and got to ask many questions throughout. It was most impressive and informative, but I feel I only know the tip of the iceberg. I was then given a short tour of the building, which is, it's a big building, so sure show up anymore. I hope to be invited back in the spring on a day that Miami'sburg students tour and see the whole facility. They treated me to Bob Evans for dinner, and then we went straight into the board meeting. Items on the January agenda were the review and approval of the treasurer's report in minutes, a board meeting was adjusted to compensate for the July retreat date, the July board meeting was moved to July sixteenth. All normal board meetings will remain on the second Tuesday of each month, in accordance with the Ohio revised code. Applications are continuing to arrive at a higher rate than the previous two years. The semi-annual evaluations of the superintendent treasurer were postponed due to a computer error on sending out the survey. A new strategic plan will be developed, since the current one will be complete at the end of the school year, and they are looking at using the same company to help them develop the new strategic plan with the help of Strategic Leadership Associates LLC. Annual dues to many professional organizations were approved. This includes the OSBA Legal Assist Fund, the Ohio ACTE Membership, Ohio Education Policy Institute. Out-of-state travel was approved, the OSBA Board Member Certificates of Appreciation were given to all board members, as well as a keychain made by the students in observance of January as School Board recognition. It was announced during the meeting that one of the teachers, Mrs. Melissa Godal, will attend the Goddard Memorial Dinner on March twenty-first through the twenty-third to receive the twenty-twenty-four National Space Educator Award from the National Space Society in Washington, DC. Other worthy mentions are the new, three new programs started in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, that will be likely full by next year, and these are the pre-law and legal studies, drones and GIS technologies, and pre-engineering. I did receive an email from Mr. Weldy that stated last week, a reporter from the Dayton Daily News called MBCTC to inquire about the new law, House Bill Ninety-Nine, that pertains to any staff carrying a firearm will need to be disclosed to the public. MBCTC has a policy that no staff will carry a firearm, only security personnel carry a firearm. I printed out a fire alarm, a firearm. I appreciate his prompt response to both the reporter and the board. I look forward to the February meeting at the MBCTC and in-person reporting to all of you as well. Molly Williams. And just so you know, we don't allow staff to carry firearms as well, that's why we have our wonderful SROs on campus, right? I'm sure all of you know Officer Kopsi, so, yeah.
All right, we'll go to report B, our legislative report, and Jason Mallory.
Well, for the record, I think Mr. Ambler fed me to the wolves, because when he nominated me for this position, I was a little naive about the current state of legislation in the state of Ohio, which seems to be robust, to say, to say it the least. So, I went through, did the best I could, there's five of those, pass them down, and I'll email you guys one, too, that you can attach to the meeting minutes. Couple of them, first, Tom Young, so everybody's property taxes went up, their property got assessed higher, and now the state legislature has formed a committee, the Joint Committee on Property Tax Review and Reform. So there, our state representative, Tom Young, is on that committee, and they just met the first of, the tenth of January, and there'll be more information coming out of there in the future. One of the main things that seem to be all over, where I work myself up, what the legislation impacts us as a school district, the first one is House Bill sixty-eight, it's referred to as the SAFE Act. It passed the House sixty-two to twenty-seven on the thirteenth of December, and passed the Senate twenty-four to eight on the thirteenth of December, same day. Was sent to the governor the eighteenth, and vetoed by the governor on the third, and the veto was overridden by the House sixty-five to twenty-eight, gaining three votes on the tenth, and is scheduled to be taken up into the Senate when they renew in session on the twenty-fourth. I'm not going to read this verbatim, but I went through, I went through, and I tried to highlight, tried to understand where we're at as a district, and, and I mean, I understand a lot of the executive orders that have come down through the Department of Education, has required Title IX obligations to the district in order to receive our federal funding, and one of the things that concerned me when I was reading through this, as well as the next piece of legislation, it seems like a lot of these state legislative values are contrary to the existing federal rules. And so there's going to be a conflict between the two, and both of them seem to be taking the position that if you want our funding, you do what we say. So, how that ends up shaking, you know, remains to be seen. But the saving, the SAFE Act, HB sixty-eight, is saving Ohio adolescents from experimentation, is what the acronym is for. And that state institutions, higher education, schools, private colleges, it's to designate separate single-sex teams for sports for each sex. It also touches on the mental health professional, which would be, I would think, guidance counselors and even mental health professionals within our schools not be able to diagnose, treat any gender-related condition without obtaining consent of the parent or the guardian. For athletics, it requires there to be a separate team for participants of the female sex with female sports divisions, and a separate team for participants of male sex with the male sports divisions, and it further defines sex being the physiological sex at birth. So if I put a link in there to the whole bill, if you want to read it, there's a lot there, and, you know, I, I've read both sides of it from testimony, and there's a lot of emotion surrounding it, and I'm sure that'll remain that way for some time. So, but it's something that is definitely need to pay attention to. The next bill, the next page is House Bill One Eighty-three, it's a subbill, and it was introduced on the twenty-third of May, twenty-twenty-three, and sent to the House Education Committee on the seventh of June. They recently had their fourth hearing in the committee on the tenth of January. The purpose of Sub Bill One Eighty-three is to amend sections of the revised code and enact sections of the revised code to have single-sex bath, sex bathroom access in primary and secondary schools. It goes through, and basically, they'd say, you know, what's staying along the same lines as the SAFE Act, this piece of legislation would require that physiological females use females designated areas, and the same for males. I printed a couple of things, just doing a little bit of research, trying to understand, you know, a couple of the areas that we might have a conflict, and with the ACA policy, just reading through where we adopted on the twentieth of August in twenty-twenty, the Title IX, and the regularizations from the US Department of Education. And I made a few notes of my, of the understanding of the existing school policies, but one thing that I've tried to find that I couldn't, are these policies within the policy manual? Like, policy ACA? Well, the policies that, like, for instance, restroom locked accommodations for transgender students can include access to sex segregated facilities, so on and so forth, if the transgender student is uncomfortable using their sex segregated restroom. These poli, the policies of, the current policies of the district are they part of the policy manual?
So it's, that's a Title IX law, that's, that's not a board policy.
So we don't have to, it just is what, it just passes through the board?
Correct.
So if there's a Title IX requirement, it doesn't require the board to bring it into the district as well?
Correct. Well, we have to follow it, because we're a public school.
I understand.
Yes.
No, I, I do understand. So if there's a contradiction from the state to the Fed, what decides who's the overriding authority is?
Our legal counsel advises us.
Okay. Because I, I would think that that would be a significant...
Right now, there isn't a, there isn't a conflict, right now.
There's not.
Right now, there's not, but with these...
There is not, but looking at these pieces of legislation, it appears that they're likely, maybe, and, you know, if there is, there's, there's a lot to consider. And so, my goal in this, in sharing this, wasn't really to start a robust discussion about it, just to make sure that my fellow board members were aware that the legislation seems to be coming down the tracks, and it'd be something that has to be dealt with at some point in the future.
Same never-dull moment.
Oh, oh, one other thing, understanding these things, and understanding our district has to seek all the federal funding we can get to defer our costs to our taxpayers, and understanding that, the contradictions that appeared to be there, I did send a letter to State Representative Young, introducing myself as a newly-elected board member in the legislative liaison, illuminating some of the pieces of legislation that are going through the House, and generally illuminating the Title IX requirements, and asked him if the state had any guidance that boards of education should consider about how the state feels about this conflict, just for our information, I haven't heard back from them yet. When I do, I will pass that along.
All right. Thank you. And then we'll go to C, our student achievement liaison, Mr. Neese there?
Well, besides Mr. Colin Lopez, our other students of the month represented and out are Bauer Elementary School, Evelyn Williams, Bear Elementary School, Emma Lawson, Kinder Elementary School, Sadie Beaver, Mark Twain Elementary School, Braxton Joseph, Medler View Elementary School, Elliot Withrow, Mound Elementary School, Riley Bice, Miami'sburg Middle School, Deandra Weishepp, and Miami'sburg High School, Ashaleen Weaver. So those are your district students of the month.
Thank you. And next, item D, Montgomery County Drug-Free Coalition liaison, Mrs. Geder.
Today, Anne and I attended the Montgomery County Drug-Free Coalition meeting. Some updates are that we received a review of the eMERGE program, that's for second chance employment after jail for people. Treatment, housing, job training are provided for men only at this time, but starting in twenty-twenty-four, they're starting a women's program, and one for students leaving the foster program, which I thought was very interesting. Other programs in place are the Ohio Recovery Campus, and also, the Dayton VA has the Compact Act, which is to assist veterans. There is a forty-eight percent drop in drug overdose deaths since twenty-seventeen, so that's a very good thing. We had two hundred and ninety-seven overdose deaths reported in twenty-twenty-three. Also, there is a poster and poetry contest that they are hosting, but the deadline is January twenty-sixth, so if anyone is interested in that, we can contact you with those that would help you with your application.
Thank you. And then, next E, district news and information, we have one item here. The latest Making a Difference honoree is Miami'sburg Middle School teacher, Michelle Lieber. Michelle was nominated by Special Education Supervisor Brittany Lipinski for going above and beyond her students at Miami'sburg Middle School. Brittany said, "It's incredible to see how she continuously finds innovative ways to empower and educate her students." Furthermore, her efforts to bring in guest speakers to discuss post-graduation options shows her commitment to preparing her students for the future. She is a rock star. Michelle's impact on the lives of her students is immeasurable, and I am truly grateful for all that she does. And then next, we'll go on to our comments, with A, the board of education comments, so we'll, you start, Mrs. Geder?
Sure, sure. First of all, I'd like to welcome our student board reps. I hope this was interesting to you, and if you have any questions for us, be sure just to reach out, and we'll, we'll help you. And then, congratulations to Colin Lopez. When I see young people, even in elementary school, that are so impactful in their school world, it, it gives you hope for the future of Miami'sburg and for our schools. That's all I have tonight.
Yeah, did it on student representation, I think it's great, I hope it's exciting, not exciting, but thank you guys very much for your time. And I just want to say thanks to all the, the staff and all the hard work that goes on in the school. And off for a new twenty-twenty-four year, and off around. Yep, that's all I got.
Just to get it all that you said, and I just wanted to do a shout-out to our counselors, they're very instrumental in our school district, and I know they help our students move along. And I'll just have to say, I am so impressed with all the interviews that we had for our student board reps. Miami'sburg has some great kids. It's a very hard decision.
Yeah.
Very hard.
All good applicants.
I'll just say, welcome to board. You're probably going to lighten us as much as we're going to lighten you.
Maybe, of course.
Congratulations to Nyla and Jason. Dale has been a big part of my life for a number of years here, but he has served the school district in many capacities over the years. A lot of knowledge just went out the door, and a lot of history just went out the door, but I wish him... but I wish him nothing but the best, and he's never retired, as it says, but I know he'll stay active within the district, and so I wish him the best. And I'll just move it on. Oh, I also wanted to say, thanks for a wonderful idea to move a meeting. I think that's a, that's a wonderful idea, but...
Hit the app, keep it realistic, so.
You know, so thank you for bringing us, you know. That's, that's what we're all here for, is to collaborate, come up with various ways and ideas. So, thank you for doing that.
I'd like to thank students, too. I think it's really cool that you guys are involved at such a young age. I mean, this is something that, you know, a lot of people like me have to be a parent before you can appreciate the importance and the impactful nature of being involved in your school district. I think it's great that you're involved at such a young age. I'd like to take a minute and recognize Mr. Homan and Mr. Blevins for taking an immense amount of time with me over the last couple of months, and I really appreciate it. I feel like I've nagged you for a ton of information. Just know that as I work myself up the learning curve, I'll become more informed and less of a burden. But I've got a curious mind and a trust of verified personality, so don't think anything of it if my questions are a little bit immense along the way in the next few months. But I appreciate all your efforts thus far. And I'm looking forward to the facility throughout the district in the next couple of months as well. Like to really get familiar with a lot of things about the district that most people don't even realize exist. So, that's it.
Obviously, ditto. I think, I think it's, I'm really looking forward to our student reps. I think it's really important for all of us to hear, because you're in the trenches, and all of our jobs, and the school board, we're all here for one reason, and that's for the students. And so, don't be afraid to bring up things, or to ask questions, or why are we doing those things, or hear some suggestions, because it's really important that, none of us would have jobs if it wasn't for all of you. And so, it, it's important for us, because we're in this position to be servants and to help our kids grow in terms of that. So, we're excited to have you. And, school board, it's National School Board Month, so I'll, probably most of the community does not know all the, all the things you go through every day, and all those things, it's, it's, you know, it's a very high-paying job, as you know, you know? But I think it's all of you said, it's, it's, you know, we're here for one reason, and it's to make our community better and to help our kids, you know, their future. So, thank you for all. You do, you guys do a lot of things behind the scenes, and it's, and it's appreciated, so.
I don't know. I think I'm happy to be here and to learn more about how, or learn more about the administrative side of our, of our Myhamsburg district works. Like, stated, you know, we have, like, the first, first perspective of how these, how laws pass in legislation, and how the decisions here affect us firsthand. And so, I don't know, I'm happy to bring perspective and suggestions on the school board, just to make the academic community the best it can be for Myhamsburg schools.
Ditto what Andrew said. Thank you all for allowing us to do this. This, like you said, is something that is going to help you guys, but it, it's also going to help us in our school.
Thank you so much for being so welcoming today. I really enjoyed being here, and I'm really excited to start working with everyone in the future, and hopefully help make a bigger impact in our community.
I also want to thank you guys for letting us be here, giving us this opportunity. I'm really excited to see how this goes, to give my contributions, learn from you guys, you guys learn from us.
They volunteered to get up at four-thirty in the morning, and helped me check the roads with Mr. Homan, and a few other folks, so.
You should just cancel right now.
They have a lot of input about snow days, for sure.
You've got four noes right now.
And also, not only are we excited to have our student reps, but our board, we truly do appreciate your support and your just willingness to support our endeavors for our students. So, it's a great recognition, and also for Mr. Togline. I know he's gone, but we do appreciate that. A few other things, our senior sports are underway, and our first Senior Recognition Day is Saturday at Troutwood for our swim and dive seniors. So, that's going to take place around one o'clock. So, hopefully, we can all get there easily. And then, of course, shout-out to our maintenance crews at this time of year. They, they do have to watch the roads with us, and the parking lots, and get all that going. So, we appreciate them, especially during this cold weather. And then, an elementary programming update, we have been working on our staffing. So, our elementary staff will know by the end of January where their new assignments will be next year, so that's exciting. We're working on our third FAQ that's going to focus on transitions and transportation. So, the transition activities that our buildings have planned for our students to take transition field trips will be coming out at the end of this month, sometime after our winter weather has concluded. The staff members have a new staff meeting in February, so after they get their assignments by the end of January, they will have a staff meeting at their new building, the first part of February. So, that'll help begin that transition of getting our new staffs together. They're also planning some family transition evenings in addition to our transition field trips for our students. So, we'll have all that FAQ out, and then just more information about our transportation and how the routes will be, because our bus drivers wanted to know, too. So, we're going to combine it, and it'll be a staff and family FAQ. So, that's in the works and should be going out in the next ten minutes. And then the moving FAQ is coming up.
Yeah. And so, the February staff meeting, the principals are inviting all staff in that building. So, our classified staff, on their statements of intent, everyone wanted to stay in the building. So, that was a...
And so did all the building secretaries, and then we'll be moving, or the principals.
But they're all going to be invited to the staff meeting as well, to that as well. And you're working with the moving companies to see how they work the layouts and all that going, so.
Because they're going to be the sta, they and the principals will be the staple force as people, new teachers come to that building, then that, the secretaries and the principals, of course, and if the principals are staying, then they'll be the person, the go-tos.
Everyone's excited about hearing their new assignments, so.
Sure.
We're going to try to get that out before January thirty-first. So, that's the plan, even earlier. That's it.
Hall of Fame is still next Friday.
It is the twenty-sixth, yeah, Friday evening. So, everyone's invited. It's always a nice event. And it looks like it's going to be, like, fifty degrees, so maybe we'll have, like, an outdoor dinner.
It's going to feel like summer.
Don't be like summer.
Don't have to throw salt in the middle of the meeting.
All right, Mr. Blevins.
I thought it was going to pass over me.
Yeah.
Just welcome to the students. Hope you enjoyed this, and thanks to the board. I know I mentioned Anne before. The more questions I get, the better trainer I can become, so.
So, we'll have twenty next week.
Next, we'll go to public comments. Each person addressing the board shall give his, her name and address. Each person is allocated three minutes, allotted three minutes, to speak up, speak until the total time of thirty minutes is used. We will give a thirty-second warning, so speakers know when their three minutes is up. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole, consistent with, with our policy. This is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. As a reminder, our expectation tonight is that, is everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. We will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. All right, and so first we have Shelby Nunnery. Just to state your name and address.
Shelby Nunnery. I live on Decker Court in Myhamsburg. Being that counselor awareness or appreciation week is coming up, I wanted to talk a little bit about social, emotional learning. I'm a proud Myhamsburg parent, so three of my kids go to Myhamsburg. I'm an educator, and I know that there can be misinformation regarding SEL, and misinformation in educational spaces can drive a wedge between our communities at the expense of our children and what they need to thrive. I'm here today to encourage all board members to continue to uphold the fabulous work done with students through the SEL program in the district. Here in Ohio, the State Board of Education supports the whole child framework. This is aimed at meeting students' social, emotional, physical, and safety needs, and ensuring children are prepared to learn. Before a student can learn to their full potential, they must have a sense of belonging. I'm so pleased that Myhamsburg has implemented various programs and partnerships to ensure they are following this framework. The board is right to do so, seeing that recent research by the Children's Defense Fund Ohio, in partnership with the Baldwin Wallace University's Community Research Institute, has shown that the majority of Ohio's parents support mental health priorities in schools, and want increased funding to support more onsite school-based services for students. Though, research has also shown that Ohio parents trust their child's classroom teachers to teach age-appropriate content and be good role models. Ohio parents support the teaching of social, emotional learning in schools to set their children up for future success. Ohio parents support the whole child framework and approach that supports the whole child in schools and prioritize equity in education. Recently, there has been some discourse on whether or not SEL is appropriate for schools, but the evidence is clear, SEL is good for kids. This framework teaches self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skill, and responsible decision-making. Unfortunately, this topic has been politicized. There is fear amongst a small number of people, but they are loud, that public schools are indoctrinating our kids. They do this by using divisive rhetoric, attacking diversity initiatives, and spreading conspiracy theories, and it becomes an us-versus-them mentality. But the thing is, critical thinking in SEL is not indoctrination. Most SEL frameworks have no connection to identity politics, but critics of SEL have conflated it with critical race theory, a concept rarely taught in grade school. If any parent has concerns about how Myhamsburg uses SEL in the district, I know that any teacher or administrator will be happy to answer your questions. As a community, we need to remember our shared values and common goals, for one kid, for, for kids to grow up as educated and well-rounded individuals, and are capable of overcoming obstacles as they grow up. Again, thank you to the schools, the school board members, and superintendent for continuing to advocate in the best interests of our students.
Thank you, Shelby.
Thanks, Shelby.
Next, we have Scott Taylor.
Thank you, ma'am. Jason, I appreciate your summary of HB sixty-eight. I've looked...
Why didn't you state your name and address first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Scott Taylor, and I live at one oh one one oh Myhamsburg Spring Borough Road in Myhamsburg. I want to appreciate, Jason, you bringing up HB sixty-eight. When I looked at this bill, should parents not have the right to raise their children based on their biological sex? Should they not have the right to decline the current, to consent the gender transition services for their child? Should they not have the right to decline permission to counselors or other mental health services for the purpose of affirming a child's perception of his or her gender or sex? Should a child's perception fail to coincide with their biological sex? And should not women have the right to be on their same sports team? So, it's a bill about fifteen pages long, and I think it's a very good bill, personally. It seems that a lot of times, we've wanted to simply affirm individuals in, in who they are, which is generally is a good idea. But what if those particular perceptions are destructive? I know I, myself, you know, from experience, what destructive perspectives lead has really not a good thing for sometimes. For decades, I suffered from gender identity disorder, now called gender dysphoria. Growing up, I had little connection with my dad, but I had a good relationship with my mother. And I believe the absence of a good role model in my life, in those formative years, was likely caused of my gender identity issues, and I really felt I was really set up for failure. And in nineteen ninety-nine, pornography opened the door for me embracing transgenderism, leading me further down a path which I really feel was very destructive. During that time, I witnessed firsthand destruction caused by what I consider unnatural gender identities. Eventually, through new associations, family support, close friends, and my church, I broke free of this dysphoria issue. And I appreciate really being a man, and recovering from what I really feel I kind of lost over those decades. I really feel the transgender great craze is really seducing a lot of elementary school girls especially. Imagine a child affirming she has transgender belief from perhaps different issues, being socially transitioned and affirming, giving chemicals to adversely turn off her puberty, and later, when she appears mature, she does not. When she finds herself more isolated, confused, and miserable, had she not been coached to go down this road, she might, perhaps, might have outgrown these dysphoria issues.
Thirty seconds.
And I really feel that maybe we need to not only focus on children's rights, but what is best for them, and counseling should try to go to the root of what the issue is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We'll go to, you turn. Do you have a motion?
I'm going to turn.
For a second. So, first by Mr. Daffler.
Yes.
And second by Mr. Amesler. Roll call, please. Yes.
Mr. Mowery? Yes. Ms. Nease?
Yes.
Mr. Amesler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.